First up, Simon Kent.
It's a pleasure to be here and I just want to start off by thanking the board for all the support that you give us, the schools, Kent County, the administrators. We couldn't do our jobs without you, so we do appreciate everything you do for us. I'll start with our points of pride from last year. We raised our ACT composite score from 19.9 to 20.3. It's the first time in school history we've been over 20, which we're very proud of. The number of students on the ACT that met benchmark increased by at least five percentage points in all three areas that is measured. Our overall accountability score went from 71 to 71.4 and our percentile Kentucky increased from 72 to 73. So overall, we either maintained or increased in all areas, which I think is probably the greatest source of pride for us because our history has kind of been, we have some success and then we fall back a little bit. So this time, this year, we were able to maintain that success and I think that's a big source of pride for us and our hope is that we just keep moving forward in those areas. So that's something we're really proud of. So how did we get to that point? Some of the things that we did last year, our students proficient and distinguished in reading, science, social studies, all increased from the previous year. That social studies score was a huge increase. And how did we do that? Our PLC meetings, we became more intentional, I think, with our focus. We met more often so that our teachers were kind of on the same page as far as the curriculum and what they were covering and where our shortcomings of our students were in those areas. Gave them time to compare weaknesses, things like that. So that was one area. The data analysis and department plans that we created from the year before, again, we more frequently revised those and met concerning them rather than just letting them kind of be out there. Math and English, MDC and LDC training and lessons continued. And one thing that was really new last year is our teachers put their weekly goal sheets, which are basically their lesson plans, were uploaded into SITS and so that all administrators had access to those. So as we did learning walks, we didn't have to interrupt instruction to get a lesson plan from a teacher. We could pull it up on our iPad, it was there, we could see it. We could see if teachers were on target with what they were doing. So that was something that I think really helped us. And then also ACT-type oriented lessons, we increased the frequency of those in our classes. A big source of pride, our overall gap score increased by 1.1 points and we were above the state average in reading, science, social studies, and language mechanics. And that was an area that we really concentrated on. We're not happy with where we're at, but again, we did increase it. And I think probably the biggest reason for that, and I put three things in the report, but basically, we did a better job of targeting who those students were and then giving them opportunities to improve in their weakness areas, especially through our RTI programs during our SCORE period, which is our built-in period in the middle of the day for students to get that RTI. And we also do enrichment during that time and tutoring. So the in-school time for students to get help they need, I think, is a key to our success overall. The number of students meeting our ACT benchmark increased in English, math, and reading as well. And again, I think that's based on the focus that our teachers put on that, from the plans to implementing those plans, to meeting in PLCs, to figure out where the weaknesses were just across the board. So what are we doing this year to get better? We've increased the RTI classes even more during SCORE now. We're in the midst of identifying students who are close to benchmarks so that we get them the more targeted improvement that they need. Again, the analysis that we're going through, just using more and more data, whether it be data from the EOCs, the testing, the MAPs, ACT, but we're really doing a better job of taking all that data and putting it together and putting it in our teachers' hands for the students they have in front of them as opposed to just an overall school view. So that's been very helpful and we think that'll give us some marked improvement. We changed the way we're doing our learning walks this year in that we identified that each week, an administrator has a specific department that they visit and they have a specific area that they're concentrating on, whether that be assessment, instruction, learning environment. But that allows us to be more focused in what we're doing and also more intentional on how many teachers we're seeing. You know, in the past, we were doing learning walks, but we found that at the end of a month or end of the year, you know, some teachers had nine visits and other teachers had three or four. So by kind of spreading it out amongst the administrators, we're more intentional in getting to more consistently each and every teacher so we see what's going on in all of our classrooms. And we think that'll help us a lot. And then really, I think the one thing we didn't want to lose focus on is what we implemented last year was obviously working because we were increasing and maintaining, so we didn't want to lose that focus. And I think sometimes that's what we do as well, is that, you know, when we've had a good year, we kind of forget about those things we did well and move on to something new. And so we want to keep doing those successful plans and then tweak where we need to, to be more successful and raise our scores even further. So what are the strategies that we need to implement then? We found that 52.5% of our graduates were college or career-ready and that's something that we really want to focus in on and improve. And I think that's where the greater analysis of, and really pushing our teachers, when we did our data analysis, our data review, instead of looking so much at how our scores were last year, we had each of our teachers identify the students that they have in their classrooms right now and where are they in reading, where are they in math, where are they in the certain areas, so that they know how they need to teach their classes. And just because you have two Algebra II classes, you made it to teach those totally different based on the level of your students. And that's something that, you know, again, we kind of always knew was out there, but we didn't push it as much. We always looked at how we did last year and now we're looking more toward how are we going to do this year? And what do we have in front of us and what do we need to do to help them? And that will help us in the second area as well with achievement, gap, growth, you know, all of the areas that we're tested on. You know, again, and most of the things that are listed in those two areas are both further implementation of what we put in place last year, because again, we do think we had some success with that. But the bigger emphasis now is looking at who do we have in front of us, what level are they at, and what do we need to do to move them forward? So that's kind of our big push this year. And I will say, I think the teachers have really embraced it for the, you know, we just, it's short-term, we've just completed that, but they really liked knowing, hey, these are the kids that I have now, this is what I need to do to, and I don't want to say fix, but to move them forward. Because, you know, when you're looking at kids at different levels, they need different types of instruction. And so doing that will help us greatly. The rest of the report there is kind of how we fared with our C-SIP goals. And, you know, for the, without going through all of them, we were successful in the majority of them. Our program reviews in all areas, we gained the total number of points that you could gain. We were successful in all of those areas. The graduation rate increased, you know, in most areas. Our achievement increased. And in the areas that it didn't, where it dipped ever so slightly, I think we were able to identify the areas where we needed to fix or do a better job through our discussions last week with our teachers. So, you know, I feel confident that those areas will come back to the levels of where they need to. I'd probably close it saying that, you know, I think the big push for us, and I've said this, I know a couple of times, but I think the big push for us right now is doing a better job of identifying where our students are at and which students need help in what areas, which is kind of a monumental task, to be honest, when you're looking at all the data that's there, you know. And I guess I saw a report last week, maybe the week before, and this is something else we appreciate, is that, you know, we're now going to purchase the data from ACT so we can upload it into SITS and that'll make our job a little bit easier as well, rather than us having to go through reports by hand and figure out which students are college and career-ready and things like that. So just another way that you guys are helping us out, which we do appreciate, because the more data we have and the easier it is to use, I think the more effective that makes us.
I just wanted to thank you guys so much for taking the time to listen to the progress at Dixie. We have a lot that we're very proud of and very pleased to share that with you this morning and thank you for your time. One of the first things that we're proud of is that we are still proficient and we are progressing. We're very pleased with this classification. We increased our overall state percentile from 55 percentile to 72 percentile. So that was quite a gain. We were very pleased. And our state AMO was .5, but we increased our measurable growth by three points. So we're very proud of that as well. We increased in four of the five categories, as you can see there, achievement, gap, CCR, and graduation. So we're very pleased with our gains in those areas. We scored in the top 45th percentile in the state for growth and reading and the 65th percentile for writing. We also have two publicly recognized teachers that we're very proud of. Chris Gillis, who was named as Cincinnati Magazine's one of the top educators in the area, and Suzanne Wadsworth, who is a board member for the Kentucky Science Teachers Association. So we're very proud of them. Over the last year, we've put some things in place that contributed to our improvement. And of those, we had, we added a few more AP courses. We've done some of that each year. Last year, we added AP government for freshmen. This was something we thought long and hard about because we weren't real sure how freshmen would do on an AP test, one specifically that is designed generally for seniors to take. But we felt that exposure to the curriculum would be good no matter what. They really blew us away with how well they did. The average national score for the AP exam, the pass rate is 50%. Our freshmen had an 80% pass rate. So it was unbelievable, unbelievable how well they did. And we also are really impressed with how many of our students challenged themselves to take AP courses. It's, Washington Post named us as one of the most challenging schools in the country because of the number of students who take AP courses. So we're very pleased with how well they've done. One of the other things that we've done is we've broadened who receives interventions. We have students who are teachers who are intentionally designing interventions in their elective courses. I've named some of them there. And that is helping more students to receive interventions in classes. We've also expanded the classes. Our READ 180 has been very successful for us. And because of that, we added a sophomore-level course to that last year. We also added a Transitions English class. And this was for students who had completed the READ 180 program, but they weren't quite ready for springboard. So we had a middle ground there called the Transitions class, which really helped support a lot of our students to get the skills they needed to go into a springboard class. One of the other things that we've done is we increased the number of our PPR walks and giving feedback to the teachers after our PPR walks. And one of the things that we had learned last year in doing the PPR walks, that many times the teachers weren't exactly clear what we were looking for. So we made that an emphasis last year, saying, here are the five things that we look for when we come into your classroom that we want to see. So that was something else that we did last year. Last year, we also, was the first time that we had a two-hour data dig, where we had the consultants join us, we had the full department there, and we hired substitute teachers so we could sit down during the day and really focus on what we're doing and looking at the data, seeing what the data from our test scores could tell us about where we need to improve and what we need to continue. So that was a big thing for us. In math, we did many of the same things that we did in English with a few differences. One is that we added the hands-on math class for freshmen. It was a class that was being very successful and we thought, well, maybe we could back it up a year and have the freshmen take it to help support getting those foundational skills, to help them as they go through their math course sequence. We also expanded our CCR classes to juniors. It had been traditionally just with seniors, but we felt that we could give them this support before they took the ACT to help rise their score when they take the ACT. We also, when we created some, with our math elective classes, we got a little more specialized in targeting the skills. We had a consumer math where their skills were lower, but the teachers were able to more specifically address what the lacking skills that they had. And because of that, they were able to make more gains. The next one, our CCR, that was the category where we got our biggest gain. We're very pleased with that. One of the activities that we did that we feel attributed to that is we trained more faculty on the COMPASS test so that students had more opportunities to take the COMPASS test. We also had students who, once they became CCR-ready, we would have them sign the banner. And that was throughout the year. So anytime that they did take the test and scored the benchmark score that they needed, we would take the banner down and they would ceremoniously sign the banner, which is pretty exciting. One of the other things that we did, that we incorporated last year, was ACT prep nights. And we had lots of students show up to this. We had several classrooms full of students who came to get some additional help on the ACT. We had prep materials for them to do a practice test. They took those tests. They came with the completed tests and were able to ask questions regarding the ones that they did not understand. We had a great success from that. We also created a monitoring tool to meet with freshmen, which regarded their MAPS test score. If they were one tier below, we identified that we had a lot of interventions for students who were below and we had skills for those who were achieving very well and we were kind of missing the boat on the middle ground. So we intentionally designed this tool to meet with those students who were one tier below and follow up with them. And because of that, we also noticed this year that we had half as many failures and we had connected that some of those students were failing. So it turned out to, that this increase in their scores translated to them passing more of their classes. With our graduation rates, one of the things that we felt made a big difference was what you talked about before or during the, at the beginning of the board meeting here. The E2020 program allowed us to have some of the students who were struggling with the traditional school setting to have the option of doing a performance-based credits at home and come in with us once a week. Because of that, we had more students who opted for that rather than dropping out, which was significant for us. We also have students who have made use of our SWS lab. Because of that, at the beginning of this year, we added an additional lab so that we have more students, before they get significantly off-track, they can come down and if they're a class or two behind, can recover those credits and get back into a regular class setting more quickly. Some of the other things that we have done this year during our data digs, we had, rather than meeting with the entire department, we broke it down to content-specific. So we had the freshman teachers meeting and looking at the freshman data and had more specialized discussions, was talking about what kinds of plans we can do to help move forward. So we felt like that was beneficial. Our plan scores, and this is something we're in the middle of now, as we're individually meeting with our sophomores about how they did on the plan test, we've also invited our math and English teachers to join us in this conversation. So as we talk to the students, they can help us talk about how this child can move, when on the back page where it says, here's the list of skills that according to the test, you still need to obtain. The teachers can help us fill in the gaps of how they can take that information and practice with it and learn from it. We also, we obtained more variety in our ACT practice materials. We had a lot of our teachers using them in their classrooms and we realized that a lot of them were overlapping. So we sat down at the beginning of the year and intentionally said, okay, here's the ACT practice test that this department will use. Here's the ACT practice test that students will use on their own time to help provide more of a variety. So the kid isn't, I've already seen this test and already learned what I need to from this test. We've also designed a schedule where the departments will each have committed to focusing on ACT skills each week. They do this throughout every day and every class, but they've also committed to, during this class, we'll provide a timed test so that students can know how to pace themselves better and improve their skills. Let's see. And our last thing here is that we had more teachers who were giving the coyote test more frequently, again, offering more opportunities for students to be CCR-ready. Based on the analysis of our report card this year, some of the things that we plan to do, we felt like the ACT prep nights were very beneficial. We plan to offer those again and to offer more of them. And one of the other things that, kind of riding on this or continuing with the success of that, is having planned skill sessions in the same way. With the planned skills, where we have the different skill sets, we're compiling right now, skill sheets to reflect each skill that the students need more work on. And then we're going to have planned skill session nights where they can come and work on those sheets with teachers to help them learn the skills that they're missing. With that, the last pages here are the C-SIP updates. Some of them, we made great progress. Some of them, we realized that we need to focus on more, like our first one, the wellness goal, and collaborating to create a plan where all of the faculty is aware of our wellness policy. That is one that we did not make progress on, but we will this next year. Our program reviews, this is one that we scored in two categories, the arts and humanities and program, our practical living. We scored needs improvement and we are working very hard to make sure that those are going to be proficient this year. We're gathering the evidence to reflect what it is we're doing in our classes. And our graduation rate, we are very pleased with that, continuing to move up. Our achievement gap is an area that we, we're working with the special ed department to come up with ways that we can help address the students who are struggling. Because we have some students that we've identified that we need to come up with some better interventions with. So we're working with district and our special ed department to help us with that. We're coming up with some ideas, but we haven't really come up with a concrete plan yet. And the last one, our CCR-ready, we're very pleased that was our biggest gain. So, thank you. And as John mentioned before, we could not do what we do without your support. So thank you so much.
Thank you guys for allowing me to come here and speak with you today. I'm really excited to share some of the things going on at Scott. This is my fourth year giving this and I'm pretty excited about that as well. I want to start just by saying that we're really starting to see some payoff from a lot of hard work from a lot of people. This is a huge team event, including board members, central office staff, a lot of teachers and parents and students at our place. And we're very excited to report that we went, our overall score increased from 62.7 to 71.4 over the last year. It's a 45 percentile jump in improvement. If you look that up, you will find that there's only 30 schools in the state that made that kind of jump out of 250-some high schools. So we're extremely proud of that and very excited to have that kind of movement. Of all the categories on the state assessment, we actually went up in every single category, sometimes as much as 20% in a category. So I'll talk to you about some of those individuals in there, but really excited about being able to say that the improvement's overall. There's not a specific one thing that did this or made the move for us. Also, we've got potentially even continue growing, which excites us. Last year, some of the things that we did that actually got us this kind of move is actually something that happened the year before. In the spring of 2012, there was actually a team of central office employees, including administrators and some other things, that came out to Scott High School, did a complete audit of our school, and provided with us a very large target list of things that they saw that should be happening that we need to do at Scott. We are actually still working on that list, but I will say that the four or five primary things that were identified then, use of learning targets and high-quality learning targets, daily use of formative assessment strategies, student-to-student activities, use of text, and then engaging students bell-to-bell. Those still drive our faculty to this day. And that audit had a huge piece in moving all of this forward. The other thing that happened last year is we implemented some RTI classes for our English and math students. And you might remember me talking to you about this last year, that if you're at Scott and you're performing below benchmark as a freshman or sophomore in math or English, you will receive an extra 72 hours of instruction in that area. Last year, the scores that I read to you, the students got that as sophomores, but the freshmen did not. This year, when students take their assessments as sophomores, they will actually have had 72 additional hours as freshmen and 72 hours as sophomores. And that's in math and English. We think that has a lot to do with those kids doing a lot better on the test. We also increased our intervention with seniors. Our site base last year used some of their allocation money to actually hire English and math positions to target specific kids that were close to benchmark. In other words, very close to being ready for college and helping them individually in a small group. We know that that increased a lot of those kids' potential and also our scores. We also used our school within the school system. You guys just proved edgenuity. That was a huge part of how we got a lot of our kids to graduate. If you will notice, our four-year graduation rate did not improve near as much as our five-year graduation rate, which is what the state uses now for assessment. And our five-year graduation rate, a lot of that success comes from an edgenuity program and the people working with those students individually in that program. Also, last year, we made it our mission to teach our kids and our teachers and our parents how important becoming college-ready was. At the beginning of last year, kids, some of the kids knew what college-ready meant. Now they all know and they talk about it. And we actually get requests from them, like, how can I be college-ready? How can I get college-ready? And that was our largest area of increase. We got 62% of our kids to college-ready last year, up from 40-something percent the year before. So we're very excited about that. Our department PLCs and our collaboration model at Scott has very much increased its efficiency. Our department heads and our department now are doing a lot of the drive. The things that used to, we would have to try to get people to do and ask people to do, they're asking for and they're actually pushing it themselves. That's a huge plus for us because it leaves us the capacity to go somewhere else and get new things started when they're taking responsibility and do that themselves. The LDC, the Learning Design Collaborative, which was part of the Gates Initiative initially, that's almost become common practice at our place, whereas it's not even its own initiative anymore. It's become, that's the way we do things. Additionally, with the implementation of the Renaissance Academy, I know you guys have watched that over the couple of past years, that program has exploded. It is doing more than well, so much that we're going to have to figure out how to service those more kids that want to be in that. This past year, which would be this year's group, we've always had about 60 to 65 kids be in that academy. This past year, we had 90 applicants for 65 spots. And it was exciting, but on the other side, we also had about 25, 26 kids that we had to service another way. So we're working on that. We've got several plans in place for that in the future. Beginning this year, there were some things that we implemented at the beginning of the year that we knew we needed to do. And a lot of them are continuations of the things I've mentioned last year. We actually expanded our RTI classes. We decided that juniors also, that are still below benchmark, will need to use extra time in math and English. So if you're below benchmark in math and/or English, you get an extra 72 hours of instruction at every single level, freshman, sophomore, and junior, until you reach benchmark, or we just keep hitting you with that until we can get you there. Okay? That's going to be a huge payoff. Our seniors who are not performing at benchmark in mathematics actually go into specific CCR Our seniors who are not performing at benchmark in mathematics actually go into specific CCR math classes where those teachers have had extensive training with coyote and compass and also just our normal math standards. And we use MAP for a lot of that, and then once they become juniors, we use the ACT data. We are still doing our PPR walks. We try to get about fifty in a week. Some weeks we get sixty or seventy, some weeks it's down to twenty or thirty, but that is paying off huge. And what we're finding is from our walks in the classroom is our teachers are now at a level where they're comfortable enough to have conversations. It's not going into classroom and saying, hey, you're not doing this, you're not doing this. It's going into a classroom and saying, hey, have you thought about doing it this way? And then they usually will come back with things they've tried and things they're going to try. We also have focused our course selections and our prerequisites. We use MAP to place kids in almost every class we have at Scott. Our MAP assessment for freshmen and sophomores tells us if they get extra interventions, if they go in an upper-level class, if they go in a regular-level class. And we provide ways for kids to move amongst that anytime they like. But MAP is our primary focus for that and our primary use of that. We also have really pushed a school-wide focus on, on our positive behavior and intervention support system. You may have heard kids talk about Eagle Cash. If you come to my school, you will hear kids talk about Eagle Cash. We started that program a couple of years back. Mr. Rogers, one of the assistant principals, I kind of gave him that, his mission to do that. And what happens is when kids exhibit a positive action or they do something that's a little bit higher than just their normal behavior, they get awarded a little cash card. It's got a nice picture of an eagle on it, and then they can actually cash that in for prizes or for small treats or for T-shirts. They can also enter drawings for things. And I just got this report last week. Last week, when we had an eagle store, which we set up at lunch and, you know, let kids buy these things, last week, a two-week total, we gave out sixteen hundred Eagle Cash in a two-week period. It's become part of the way we do things at Scott, and our kids expect it, and our kids want to get it and want to live up to it. We also, thanks to the Board of Education and a lot of other people's hard work, we also opened a new wing this year. We have doors and walls now in ninety-five percent of our rooms. We were excited to get this improvement just before that happened because it was really kind of the perfect storm for Scott. We've got a great movement in a great direction, and, and people are doing really well. And then we get to move in this new wing, so even the physical surroundings feel good and feel better. Our discipline numbers are down tremendously. We think that's part to do with the way we're doing business and the way things are getting better. We also believe that it's part due to our new physical structure. Based on our analysis and the scores we got back recently, there's still some things that we're working on that we want to concentrate on in addition to things that we're pushing forward already. The first one is career-ready options. We are doing a decent job now of getting kids college-ready. We are not really pushing kids to career-ready the way we want to. We really need to get kids in a career pathway. In the state of Kentucky, about forty-five percent of kids that are college-ready also get career-ready. Ours are not that many. We have very few kids that are doing that. We do have some things in place already, but they're not there yet. The first one is our culinary program that was instituted a few years back, you heard me speaking of. We have about sixty kids that next year could be completing that program and be taking the test to be career-ready. We do expect most of them to make that. We're also looking into setting up feeder programs for the academies. The academies are a great avenue for us here in Kenton County to use a resource to get kids career-ready and a pathway that's going to be high demand and high pay. We actually met this week to work on getting a couple feeder systems for that. We're, we're looking at ways to merge our current system with that feeder system so that kids that are freshmen at Scott High School can feed right into that program. We're pretty excited about that. We also are continuing to work on gap. We, you might remember last year, we got into a grant from the state to work on our gap students. We scored at about the thirty-second percentile in gap this year, and from a year earlier, we were in less than ten percentile in gap, and that's how we got into that program. But we're doing much better with those kids in that, we're working with that grant program. We have a couple of teachers that are in right now with one of our assistant principals, and then that will expand this next year to have more teachers do that as well. So gap is a definite area that we're working on, and of course, those RTI classes will help as well. I will say that, you know, again, I mentioned to you last year, one of the big improvements and things I was excited about at Scott is that Scott was moving forward really with push from parents and teachers. Parents, teachers, and students now are pushing Scott forward. The capacity that is there is better than I have seen it in my existence there. I honestly think if I disappeared tomorrow, they would keep going and keep pushing and doing the things that we have in place. It's, it's pushing itself. They're actually asking us now about what they can do and how they can do it. They're very well-educated, they care about their school. I expect that we are going to be distinguished next year. That is our goal. We were proficient this year. We want to be distinguished next year, and that is our expectation. We've shared it with our students. We actually had a pep rally a couple of weeks back for a couple of our teams that did really well, our soccer team and our volleyball team. We actually started that pep rally with an academic approach, talking about our scores. And to see and hear a thousand kids scream and yell about being proficient and about performing well and wanting to be distinguished, it, it was, it was heart-wrenching. It was exciting, and I want, I want to thank you guys for your support. I know you've been a big help with that. Several of you have been out to my school and talked to my people. It's an exciting time to be at Scott, and we're not done. We're not done. This is just the first step for us in our growth. Thank you.